All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Second item on the agenda is the policy calendar. I'm just going to turn this over to Iris.
Okay.
So that you can run us through our items. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to start first, this being November. We always present the capital budget, which will go to the full board at the end of the month. And we, this year, you will see some real significant changes in terms of how we're doing the budget and some of the categories. So I hope that the committee will indulge me because it's going to take a little bit to go through the capital budget.
Can we get some copies? Because it looks like we don't have a full set of copies here. They were circulated before I knew, but they didn't make it. Is this the only thing we're looking at? Or is there some more detail?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Also, Madam Chair, at the end of the agenda, I'd like to go into executive session to discuss some relevant and sensitive real estate issues. Yes. Okay, terrific. So as I said, there are some significant changes from last year, and there are many changes going on with respect to the capital budget in Albany. For at least 15 years, the state has used a five-year capital plan for budgeting purposes. The process was that agencies would receive a capital infusion at the beginning of the five-year plan, and then some additional appropriations in the interim years to adjust for changing needs. The current state fiscal year we're in is 2012-2013. The last year of the current five-year plan, in the last five-year plan, the state was particularly generous to CUNY. We received about $1.6 billion from the state. And for those board members who have been to many of the groundbreakings and the openings, you've seen the, our labor has brought some very good fruit. So this year, the governor, through legislation, created a new entity to help form capital investment in the state called New York Works. Recently, New York Works required all state entities to provide a 10-year capital budget request. So whereas before we did a five-year capital request, now we're required to put in a 10-year capital request, which I might add is similar to the city budgeting process, where we're required to put in a 10-year as well as a five-year plan. As a result, we expect the governor to propose a 10-year plan in the executive budget that usually comes out in January. According to New York Works, they plan to take the information provided by state agencies and analyze it together with DOB. The goal is to propose a uniform investment plan aligned with strategic plans identified by regional economic development councils. And I think everyone on the committee is aware of the fact that our chancellor heads up the regional councils here in the City of New York. So, New York Works has developed a template format for us to use in submitting our 10-year capital budget requests. We have a draft, which I will share with you shortly. The format New York Works developed asks that we represent our requests for appropriations in categories that they have set out. We're also required to answer questions about the economic benefit and returns of our proposals. The projects will be reviewed with an eye towards those projects that provide an economic return to the state. Listed on the screen are the major categories we're asked to break down our information into. So the first category, I think this committee is very familiar, is state of good repair. And this is projects that maintain the entity's infrastructure in a state of good repair. The second category is capacity optimization. This is projects that expand or contract facilities, buildings, or other capital infrastructure to match both current and anticipated user demand. And the third category is called transformational initiatives, projects that result in significant advancement of statewide or regional strategies. Such projects would have a dramatic impact on the state's long-term economic competitiveness, strength, job creation, and quality of life. They also ask CUNY to break down our requests into components that make sense to us. Here are CUNY's components, most of you are familiar with, except perhaps adapted reuse. Adapted reuse is, for example, when we take an office and convert it to a classroom or a lab. So the categories that we have focused on are critical maintenance, programmatic expansion, equipment software, and adaptive reuse. Listed on the screen is a summary of CUNY's New York Works submission. They ask that the template only include state funds, so the city funds have been excluded from this template submission. That is why the numbers are lower than the overall request that you will see in the budget resolution. As you know, annually, we develop a comprehensive five-year capital budget request. The request to provide a 10-year plan from New York Works came too late to amend that process, so we used the information that we gathered for the five-year plan and extrapolated it for a 10-year plan. We also recently updated our state of good repair study with the campuses, and new data has been included in our request. CUNY has provided details about both the five-year request and the 10-year request in the budget resolution. I will now discuss the generic details of the request. Our request needs are prioritized per Board of Trustees approved goals, some of which are listed on the screen. The first is state of good repair efforts. This would continue CUNY's critical maintenance program to upgrade existing facilities and infrastructure. The second list of goals is to complete ongoing partially funded projects, such as the Academic One Building at New York City College of Technology, which I might add, we'll break ground very shortly, renovation of the Lawrence and Eris Field Building at Baruch College. The third set of priorities are to continue to request funds for the chancellor's initiative, such as decade of the sciences, including such projects as Brooklyn College's Roosevelt Science Building and Hunter College's Health and Science Professions Building, and also to upgrade technology across the university, such as CUNY first, and funds to purchase science and educational technology equipment. So here are the details of the capital budget request in the resolution before you. The five-year request covers the period 2013 to 2014 through 2018-2019, and the 10-year request covers 2013-2014 through 2022-2023. This year, the university is requesting $6.4 billion for the upcoming five-year plan. This breaks down $5.1 billion for senior colleges, $1.3 billion for community colleges. And in response to the New York Works, the university is requesting $10.5 billion for the upcoming 10 years, $8.3 billion for the senior colleges, $2.2 for the community colleges. We're also requesting approximately $87 million in REZAA funding from the borough presidents and the city council. These funds are only allocated on an annual basis. I'd now like to talk about some major new initiatives in the budget request that you'll see as you go through the numbers. First is York College's new academic village and conference center. And I might add that DOB, in all these projects that you're going to see, has given us approval to start the design of these projects. So typically, if they give us the approval to start the design, we pretty much hope that the money to start building will follow soon afterwards. York's new academic village and conference center, the architects is ENIAD Associates. This project will create an academic village conference center on the site of the classroom building at York College. The 165,000-square-foot facility will be the new home of the school of business and the state-of-the-art classrooms, computer labs, and conference rooms that will be available for use by the community as well as to the students. The new building will transform the west side of the campus. The next new project I'd like to discuss is Hunter College, its School of Health Professions Building. Again, the architects are ENIAD and Perkins Eastman. This project will bring Hunter College's science programs, which are partially located at Brookdale Campus on 25th Street, uptown within walking distance to the main campus on E-68th Street. In a public-private partnership with Memorial Sloan-Kettering, CUNY and MSK propose to develop over a 1 million-square-foot facility on E-73rd Street. Hunter College's share will be about 360,000 square feet, and it will support its health professions programs, including nursing, physical therapy. There will be research labs in the building for chemistry, biology, psychology, physics, and astronomy, as well as a 300-person lecture hall. The next project is Brooklyn College's new Roosevelt Hall Science Building. The architects are Mitchell Jurgula. This project will demolish the existing Roosevelt Hall building and construct a 180,000-square-foot science facility with high-tech instructional laboratories, general-purpose classrooms, and support spaces. The new facility will support the college's academic goal of transforming to an interdisciplinary teaching model. The next project is the College of Staten Island's new building officially known as the Interdisciplinary High Performance Computational Center. The architects are HDR. This project will construct 175,000-square-foot facility to house a high-performance computer that will serve as a university resource for computer-based modeling and simulation. The center will contain spaces dedicated to state-of-the-art scientific computing hardware, labs for visualization, instructional research labs, classrooms, and dedicated student work The last project that I want to discuss is at Hostos Community College. As this committee remembers, a few months ago, we presented Hostos's new master plan, which calls for a new 170,000-square-foot allied health and science building, which you're seeing in the rendering here. There is no architect yet selected, so we took it upon ourselves to envision what we thought, yeah, to be, right. We were the architects for this building.
Save us a few dollars.
That's right. The new building will address space deficits on campus and replace outdated facilities with state-of-the-art ones. This will include classrooms and the science labs to support the college's allied health program, as well as their growing engineering and natural science programs. Dental and wellness clinics, where students will gain practical experience in delivering health and dental hygiene services, and where the public will receive dental hygiene and wellness education, and care will be housed in these buildings. So Madam Chair, this is the presentation on the capital budget, and I'm happy to answer any committee questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry. Would you very quickly, you mentioned the total budget request 2013 through 2023, and I think the total request was $6.3 billion? Is that it, or $6.2 billion?
Well, no, the 10-year request is $10.5 billion in total. $8.3 billion for senior colleges.
$8.3.
And $2.2 for the community colleges.
Okay.
And then the five-year plan is $6.4 billion.
Right. And that's the breakout. Now, do either of those numbers include the city funds? You originally said the budget was to exclude city funds, but now they're in.
Yes, this does.
So this totally.
This does.
This does include city funds.
Yes, but in the submission that we made to New York Works.
Right.
We had to back end the city portion of the request.
Who has New York City Works?
Margaret, the woman's name is Margaret Tobin. She's the, I guess, executive director of New York.
Margaret Tobin?
Yes.
Do you have another question? Trustee Shorter?
Sorry?
Is that?
Oh, yes, thank you so much.
Jay Weiser, just, what's our process for determining what goes into the, you know, into the capital budget? And obviously, it's, I can understand the huge complexity of putting this together, but what's the forum for discussing this ahead of time?
We work with the individual campuses to set out their priorities in terms of what projects that they need to get done. As I said, we use the template, the priorities set down by the chancellor and by the Board of Trustees, decade of the sciences, ongoing projects, state of good repair. And we meet with each of the campuses in the summer. We go over the priorities, they're discussed with the college presidents. And in addition, we work off the master plans that we have done for many of the campuses over the last five or six years. There, we set out the priorities that the university would like to ask the state for. As an example, at Hostos, as a result of that master plan, it was determined that a new health sciences building was needed. And that's how we basically come up with the priority list of what goes in.
So is there a process for sort of integrating all that and reviewing the whole thing and how it fits together at this level, at the trustee level?
Well.
Or at the central level, obviously on the administration side, certainly is?
The trustees are, all the master plans are presented to the trustees. They vote on those master plans. And in the committee meeting, often we bring projects that we're thinking of doing or we're anticipating doing, and they're voted on both by this committee and the full board.
So it sounds like then what we're doing is we're looking at, this committee and the board's looking at it on a campus-by-campus, project-by-project basis, but at this level there's not really that much review of how it all fits together?
It's all derived from the individual master plans of the campuses, which have very, very deep involvement of administrators, faculty, students. The same exact process that we use when we develop the master plan that drives the operating budget. So everything that is derived comes from those basic building blocks. This part is really just integrating all of that information and putting it out.
So do we ever find that we have to make choices among these things that need to be done? You know, because it just sounds like it's all done bit by bit.
Yeah, we, of course we, there are always, budgeting is about making choices. Yes, absolutely.
And we have to set priorities. I mean, if a campus has a real, as an example, Bronx Community College has tremendous needs in terms of state of good repair. Other colleges don't have that need. The Guardia had a huge need in terms of center three. So we're always examining what our priorities need to be, and hopefully we get it right. The other thing is, I would like to say that President Mello is here. She's the chair of the COPs Facilities Committee, and we're very often bringing projects and discussing new initiatives at that committee meeting as well.
So the five major new initiatives that you just enumerated, does that fall under one of the three categories, such as the chancellor's initiative? Or are these projects that are underway because the designs have been approved?
No, these all fell under the chancellor's initiative.
Okay, so it's category three.
Yes.
Where does the community, the new community college fall? Or is that too far out? These are more the.
That's pretty far.
Far.
Not necessarily here. Probably be the back end of the 10-year plan.
The back end.
And we hope to do a public-private partnership.
No, that's why I was asking.
And that's why, until we really understand a developer's need integrated with ours, it's very hard to do the mathematics of it.
So if I may, and I, if I'm offline here, please tell me, Madam Chair, if the, so the new Manhattan Community College will continue to lease space as the.
We have a 10-year lease.
It's a 10-year lease.
On that piece of property. The dirt that we're looking at is the current north wall of John Jay College. And that's going to be a highly sought-after piece of property. And we're going to have to go slow, and I don't think that we need to rush that really to see. I think the market will probably benefit us by slowing down as to rush to do that right now. There are many other priorities that we have. The new community college, Trustee Shorter, is still in its infancy and still has a very small numbers of students that we're looking at. It's not going to need a campus of the magnitude until a few years out.
All right. I was unaware that the current leased space was sufficient for four years, right?
Yes.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You're going to attribute the.
No, no. Okay. It just, I have a little concern in light of a recent event. It's clear that we need to reexamine the way we put the emergency system into our new buildings. And it seems to me that Beach House is not so attractive as it used to be based on what has happened. So when I'm looking at the Hunter College Initiative, which is right by the water, I'm a little concerned. So I hope the people who will be hired to do the work will be taking those things into consideration.
Let me alleviate your fears on two levels. Number one, we understand that new building will be at a floodplain, and so we're going to build a bathtub, and that's how we're going to build the building, number one. And number two, the emergency generators of that building will be going on the sixth floor where the mechanical space will be, so it won't be in the basement of the building.
Yeah, my question is, with this 10-year plan, is there any point, like maybe at a five-year point, where we can relook at the assumptions? I mean, 10-year plans, I mean, forgive me, I'm.
You're absolutely right.
You know.
You can't even project a couple of years.
Exactly.
I spent 20 years in city government, where we did a five-year plan and a 10-year plan. Trust me when I say that by the time you got to the 10th year, the budget didn't look like anything that you submitted 10 years before. So it's a very fluid process that you go through.
We're not driving the 10-year plan. It's being driven by state government.
Yes. And so I'm just wondering, is there a point, given that that's the case, you know, what point do we have to make a mid-course correction to input based on new needs, student needs, building needs? You know, I think that our plans, you know, in terms of the decade of the sciences, well, you know, there's a lot more to that journey that we haven't discovered yet. And so it seems like there needs to be a point where we can make some type of a mid-course correction. These dollars may or may not be enough. I don't know.
My guess is, and I think that New York Works and State DOB and the state government's really finding their way on this, my guess is it will be similar to what the city does, which is when you get to the end of the five years, they ask you to redo your 10-year plan. So there'll be plenty of opportunity to redo it. This is not cast in stone in any way.
But two points to be very clear on, at least from my standpoint, and the vice chair asks a very important question. I guess point number one is, there are not discreetly defined points at which we can come back in and say we would like to correct this plan. I think I heard you say it's typically at the end of the five years. Is that right?
Typically in city government, but let me just say, the state has not set what their process is yet.
Well, that's, that was my second point.
So, you know, my sense is that maybe they'll do it after five years, maybe they'll do it after two years or three years, A, depending on how well the economy's doing, and B, really determining what the priorities are to say.
But we can initiate.
It's, well, it's not initiated on the city level, and I doubt it would be initiated at the state level.
But what you've said is, I think, and this was my second point, there has a newly-created state entity under the governor, New York Works. And as you point out, they are groping their way. Is there any way that CUNY can influence the process, at least to say, we would like to have the ability to come in at year two or year three? As you say, they're groping their way, and I actually, yes.
A lot of this is being driven by the 10 regional councils.
Exactly.
And with me chairing the New York City one, the answer is absolutely that we will be.
That raises my comfort level tremendously.
The other thing is, can I just say that on the New York Works task force, CUNY has a lot of friends on that task force, and Margaret Tobin came in a couple of weeks ago. She spent a number of hours with us to sort of understand CUNY, understand our process. So I believe that there's going to be an opportunity to sort of make our voices be heard in terms of how the process should work.
I know Margaret very well.
So do I.
So that's good.
I hired her right out of graduate school.
She was the first CFO of the Hudson River Park Trust. It was Route 9A.
Very talented lady.
Yes.
Sounds like we have a friend in Margaret Tobin, so. Are there any other questions on the presentation? Was that the beginning of another?
I think I just want to, you know, I mean, you know, Iris is, and her team, you know, as usual, have developed, you know, a very good plan in light of all of the strategic goals that we have. I mean, it's great to see the alignment, you know, with our operational goals and the goals that we have for the students, and also the City of New York and our role at City University within that. So I just want to commend the team for that work.
Thank you. I just want to thank Gwen Proctor and her staff who are here. Gwen has had walking pneumonia for the last month, and she hasn't listened to me. She's been in every day working on this budget, so I just want to.
I'm better.
You're better, okay.
Just stopped walking.
Right. Maybe. She's not better.
Oh, God. Well, thank you, yes.
I am better.
Just got her color back.
Just don't sound like it.
Yes.
Dedication. Okay, well, then I guess we can move on to the next agenda item, which is Maker Evers?
Yes. First, let me say that if you look, well, this project was first brought to this board in June of 2006. I don't want you to think that we did nothing or, you know, we were sort of wallowing around. This is a project that I really need to commend President Pollard, who really worked with us to better define what this project needed to be for Maker Evers. This project will renovate approximately 42,000 square feet of Charles Evans Innes Memorial Library, and will build a new 2,200-square-foot welcome center adjacent to the library located in the Bedford Building. The upgraded library will provide the college with a state-of-the-art code-compliant facility. And the architecture firm of Icon Five has really done a tremendous job in identifying the goals of the college, as well as President Pollard, to get this done. So we're asking approval of the design by ICANN Five of this $21 million renovation project at Maker Evers.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to know, obviously, from the time you started in '06 to today, uses of libraries are changing very fast, certainly at the Root, which is where I am receiving much more room to use in workstations and conference facilities rather than stacks. And I just wanted to get an idea of how that's been considered and integrated into this plan.
Well, that's exactly why we paused the project, because we are rethinking now how libraries are used on college campuses. This will be more in line with the library at Bronx Community College than it will at the existing library now at Maker Evers. So it's just what you said, fewer stacks, more workstations, more places for students to work in groups, and more ability for students to have the technology that they need now at libraries. I see.
Yeah, my question is along the same lines. A library is not the library that my mother used, or not even the library I used when I was years ago. And so I'm just wondering if, as we look at continuous improvement with everything that we're doing, are we looking at what the next stage might be, you know, in terms of state-of-the-art type of quote-unquote "library facilities," and are we using this as an opportunity to look at it within that light? I think Bronx does move it some. My question is, is that the quote-unquote "best practice" out there from that standpoint? You know, are we utilizing our monies, you know, in the right way in terms, especially given that we only get a few shots at this?
Right now, we think that we have achieved at the university in terms of a new template for what we want to do with libraries. The best example, I think, in the system is not only Bronx Community College, but what City College did with their library, using their own funds, getting rid of many of the stacks that aren't used anymore, creating numerous workstations, and very innovative and creative work-study areas for groups of students to work together. In every project that we do that entails a library or has a library attached to it, we are very clear to bring in those consultants who we believe can really think out the next 10 years for us in terms of how we achieve just what you're talking about.
The next question I have, and maybe it's not appropriate for this committee, but I'm wondering about, I did some consulting work with Google, and, you know, and I'm amazed at the type of partnership that a number of the high-tech companies have with different entities. And I'm just wondering, is there a plan on that college campus to get maybe a high-tech firm involved? Is Microsoft, I mean, Apple? firm involved, is Microsoft, I mean, Apple, whoever, you know, involved in looking at how we can really advance the technological capability and deal with the digital divide, you know, which is the real issue there, especially in that community? Who's dealing with that?
My guess is the head librarian here at CUNY, Curtis. I know that he's beginning to think about various issues about libraries of the future, and my guess is probably Curtis is thinking along those lines, as well as some of the campuses where they are, you know, doing pretty innovative stuff like City College.
And libraries in the future are going to be... Librarians are going to be more important now, because so much of research students do now is on the internet, and so it's not refereed in any way. And, you know, they have to be able to guide students towards, you know, innovation that has a higher chance of actually being...
As a matter of fact, Alan and I went this summer with Curtis. We went down to Princeton University, where now Princeton, Columbia, and the New York Public Library don't have stacks anymore in their individual libraries. They put them in this collective, I guess, warehouse. And what a student basically does, or a faculty member, they put in a ticket, they request the book, and within 24 hours, the book appears on the campus. And Curtis took us there because it's the way...
Real estate is too expensive.
Expensive here in New York to...
That's really what's driving it, is it's just too expensive.
Now, wouldn't a partnership, like with Apple or whatever, wouldn't that be something that would be generated from a president, mostly? Wouldn't that be the kind of...
We have a very well-trained and highly innovative and forward-thinking IT group here at the university that Brian Cohen is very much driving. And with Curtis and Brian, they are constantly, you know, consulting, to your point, Philip, constantly consulting with some of the futurists connected with these big technology companies and bringing that information back and embedding it into planning. So the answer is absolutely, and we'll continue to do that.
No, that's good, because there's a naming opportunity here for this building. I'm sort of looking for that, and, you know, in a partnership of private involvement that would help to facilitate the goal of dealing with the digital divide issue that that community faces, so.
Any other questions on the Meghav Evers library expansion? All right.
So the last agenda item is to authorize a lease amendment for additional space at 230 West 41st Street. The university currently leases about 172,000 square feet in this space. It's a building which is owned by the Research Foundation of the City University of New York, and the university's Office of Budget and Finance is currently located in this facility, but they need additional office space. So the university is seeking to add approximately 4,600 square feet to the space on the 11th floor, and it's at a base rent of $43 a square foot, and the amended lease will bring the current lease to a termination date of 2017.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Do we have to take a building?
Yeah, we have to hold on to this, so we might as well start here. Since we have the motion on the table. So all those in favor of authorizing the general counsel to execute a lease agreement for the property of 230 West 41st Street?
All right.
All those opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. And going backwards, I will take a motion for the library expansion of Meghav Evers to oppose.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and motion carries as well? And the first item on calendar, those to approve the 10-year capital budget request for major bonded projects authorized by CUNY Construction Fund. All those... Oh, I have a motion, need a motion, sorry.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and motion carries.
Point of information, Madam Chair, the... When will the Meghav Evers library commence?
Well, we have to finish the design, and my sense is that probably construction will commence in about four months.
And there'll be a... The process to notify the school, and the school will notify others about this library?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, part of what we've been doing over the last few months is we have to move a temporary library to the Carroll Street Building, because a good portion of the library will be out of commission. And we've been working very closely with President Pollard on this, and he's aware of the progress, and it's been very... The college community has been involved in terms of the design.
Soon as the board asks at the end of this month.
Then we'll announce it, because this is a question...
This is an advisory to the board.
Good.
And the chancellor just asked me, "Do we have the money in place?" The answer is yes. And again, I want to thank Gwen and her staff. It's been a... It's both state money and city money that's making this project happen, and Gwen and her staff are very creative in terms of putting together the financing.
Thank you, Gwen. Okay, we are going to move into executive session at this time. I request that the cameras are turned off.
Before we go into executive session, Madam Chair, I want to, I think, publicly express a major point of concern, and that is that I believe this committee really has to recognize the fact that our senior vice chancellor was recognized by the entire industry in front of 1,500 people at the AIA Heritage Ball, and that's quite an honor to her and CUNY, and we should...